Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Monday, October 19th, 2015's council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off. I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you, the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you. Mayor and councilmembers' comments. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. Albion College just hosted its annual Fall Board of Trustees Meeting. At that meeting, it was announced that, and confirmed, that Albion College will be working with downtown developers to bring a hotel to the downtown, that the 101 North Superior Building will be converted into an institute center where the Career Development Center will be located, along with aspects of the Ford Institute and the Gerstacker Institute, with the purpose of connecting the college in real and tangible ways with the community, and that groundbreaking for the hotel will be at the end of March, early April of next year, and that any sort of site preparation that needs to happen will be happening over the winter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would like to state that the school that I graduated from, Michigan State University, is the school that has the greatest finish in college history, after we beat the University of Michigan. Go Green.
I have to agree with that one.
We've all been invited to a breakfast at the Senior Fork Center on Thursday, right?
Yeah.
At 8:30.
Yeah.
So, don't forget that. Albion Glow is coming up, December 1st. It starts lining up at 5:30 by the post office, and the parade begins at 6:30. So how many of the councilpeople think they'll be there? One, two, three, four?
I will try.
Okay, we'll all be there. All right, I like that. All right, I think that's all the announcements I have. Anyone else? If not, we're moving on. Presentations. Substance Abuse Awareness Month, the Mayor's Youth Council.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good.
This is a proclamation for the Red Ribbon Week, October 20th through 28th of 2015. Whereas Red Ribbon Week, founded in 1985, is the oldest and largest drug prevention campaign in the country, and whereas Red Ribbon Week began as a way to honor special agent, and I cannot pronounce his name.
Enrique Camarena.
There you go. I hope you all heard that. Who lost his life in the fight against drugs, in the DDA efforts to reduce demand for drugs through prevention and education programs, and whereas Red Ribbon Week is nationally recognized and celebrated by wearing red ribbons and badges, and whereas Red Ribbon Week serves as a vehicle for communities and individuals to take a stand for the hopes and dreams of our children, to a personal commitment to live drugs-free lives, with the ultimate goal being the creation of a drug-free America. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Joe Domingo, Mayor, on behalf of the officer to the council do proclaim, October 20th through 28th of 2015, as Red Ribbon Week, and urge all American citizens, all Albion citizens, to make a commitment to live a drug-free life.
There you go.
This goes to our youth mayor.
Okay.
Now you're on.
Should I introduce myself?
Should I interview myself?
Should I introduce myself?
Well, you should.
Okay. I am Akaya Ridley, and I am Albion Mayor's Youth Leadership Council's Youth Mayor. Students in the Albion Public Schools will participate in activities to educate them in the fight against drugs. We would like to have a poster contest and offer a financial stipend as the prize. Therefore, this letter is being written to ask for your support in honoring Red Ribbon Week and the officers that were slain. And it's from Harry J. Bonner, Sr., the Executive Director of the Substance Abuse Prevention Services, Akaya Ridley, Mayor of the Mayor's Youth Council, and Shaiteriana Stram, Vice Mayor. And also, one more thing, on behalf of the Mayor's Youth Council, we have outstanding, across-ages mentoring community service award awarded to Mayor Joe Domingo for your dedication, outstanding community service, and support for Albion's youth. We couldn't do it without you. Awarded this 19th day of October, 2015.
Good job. Real quick, all the young people here are from Albion Community Schools and Marshall High School, and are members of the Mayor Youth Coalition, and also the Junior Optimists Club, which is led by the City Manager and myself and Ms. Davis. We also have our school board member, Ms. Davis, here. And we just want to like to thank the council for having the patience to have the young people learn how to be civic leaders. They are scared to death, they may have to speak. You guys are going to get to speak. So, the idea would be, this is good practice for them. At some point in time, hopefully, they will sit in the seats that you guys are sitting at. Another part of that is that all these students are members of the Albion Community School System. Everybody knows our school system is being challenged at this time. I think a couple of councilpeople and the City Manager are part of the Citizens Committee. I think at this time, it's very important that the city, the college, the community, parents, everybody, come together to think about what education means in our city. There is no more easy decisions. All the easy decisions have been made. The rest of them are hard. And I'm not quite sure what that's going to be as this process goes on, but I do know this, this is our future, and if you don't do something to take care of that, you have no future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Our next presentations will be the Albion College International Students.
Let's get to read the names, Deb.
Good evening. Resolution, nomination of honorable citizens, October 19th, 2015. Whereas it has come to the attention of the City of Albion, that it's the host of a number of international students, and whereas these students call...
I can't believe they couldn't hear me. It has come to our attention of the City of Albion that this is the host to a number of international students, and these students call Albion their home, if only for a short time. And whereas, having such a diversity among its population is a positive contribution to the welfare of the city, and whereas, a representative of Albion College has asked to these international students to be recognized by the City Council. Therefore, let it be resolved that the following persons shall be here by name as honorary citizens of the citizen of the City of Albion. And I give you the pleasures of reading these wonderful names while I give them each a certificate and a crest from the City of Albion.
Thank you.
And if you, oh, if you follow my list...
Is your list the same as...
I spent two hours getting them in order.
Okay. All right.
However you want to do it.
Okay. I will recognize Eris Kanamosa from Kosovo, who could not be with us today.
Okay.
Then Tobias Froelich of Canada and Germany. Jefte Jean-Claude could not be with us, and then we have Bindaria Munturgal from Mongolia. Then we have Chisara Sietian from Romania. Chow Ye Shang from China. Nasra Shabban from Egypt. Marie Chambon from France. Laura Murillo from Costa Rica. Gerardo Huidobro from Peru. Lilia Chenishova from Russia. Durgun Naran Naranbat from Mongolia. Agada Alina Ricardi from San Marino. Naomi Fonta from France. Alize Mosconi from France. Oops, we're one off. Okay. Second. I'll fix it. Lisa Schmidtbaum from Germany. And Mi Tron from Vietnam. That is all of our group who were able to be with us tonight.
Make sure you take those back with you.
All right.
Make sure that they get those. All right?
May I have a word?
You got the floor.
All right. Thank you very much to everyone in the City of Albion, members of the City Council, Mayor Domingo, all of you. We really appreciate your inviting these students to your home and inviting them to make Albion their home while they're here. As you heard, they're from all over the world, and especially this year, we're so delighted to have so many students from so many different places. And they're all smiling tonight because they got to hear me work and practice their names and still not do it exactly right, so... But, thank you.
Local Compensation Board. Anybody here from the Local Officers Compensation Committee? Would you please step forward? You're the next on the agenda. Oh, Scott Brown.
Good evening. Put the mic toward you. Thanks. Is that better? Should I bend now? I'm just here to answer any questions.
Tell us your proposal.
I don't have it written in front of me, but I believe the proposal you should have in front of you. To just kind of put it in summary and recap, we met, four of the five committee members made it to the commission meeting. It was the consensus of the commission unanimously for the members present to start phasing out the stipend per meeting that you receive when you go to various meetings. It's caused some problems in the past, it's kind of archaic, not that many municipalities do it anymore. And there was two paths we could have taken while we were discussing it. One was to either rip it off like a mandate, would have been a little bit of sticker shock had we run that route. At the end of the day, everyone was much more comfortable phasing it out over the next couple of years. So this year, we have removed two of the stipend meetings for both councilpeople and mayor, but increased, so that's taking basically eighty dollars off the table, but increased salaries by twenty-five dollars apiece. So it's not a complete pay cut, it's a very small pay raise, and I don't intend to speak to the budget, but if I understand it correctly, it's a small increase to the budget, a fraction of a percent, but I think it's negligible and worth doing to try and move the city forward and get it. Most municipalities are all, an elected person just receives a salary now. So that's what we have proposed, and it was unanimous vote.
Yes?
What I'm seeing here, that would be a twenty-five dollar raise on the base salary. It takes it to two-hundred a month from now where it's one-seventy-five. And the two meetings that will be removed will be eighty dollars per month.
Correct.
My question is, some of these boards are seats that seem to require council personnel. Was there any information or brain thought on how many boards that the City Council is required to sit on, because some that the mayor is required by charter to sit on? Those in the computations also?
Right. We did not take into account any boards that are required for City Council or mayor to serve upon. The thought of the board unanimously going forward was, it should be part of your stipend pay as a whole, serving on these other boards and committees, and just do away with the per-meeting stipend.
So therefore, you're recognizing that that would be a pay cut? Period, if you didn't add all of the boards that the mayor is required to sit on, and some of us are required to sit on?
Right.
Okay. I'm saying all that to say, I gladly accept it. I just want the citizens to be clear that we are taking regular pay cuts in conjunction with the situation that our City Manager and our department heads are facing with the budget. Thank you.
Yeah, in terms of total money, potentially, City Council and mayor people could have taken advantage of it, just almost six thousand dollars. If everyone here had attended every meeting and submitted every reimbursement, it would have been six thousand dollars total. And it's kind of problematic when you try and do your budgets because you can't ever tell who's going to submit for what meeting, who isn't. Even the folks that do submit don't submit regularly. There's no pattern, and it becomes very hard to tell what's going to happen, but...
So clearly, we're taking the lead with taking cuts in payments. That's all we want the public to know. It starts at the top. We're taking our cuts.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Sayonara.
Bye-bye.
Bon chance.
Thank you.
Very proud.
Tell your friends back home about how you do that, okay?
Thank you again.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay. Citizens' comments. Person addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and no more than five minutes. Property informers record, are there any citizens' comments on the agenda this evening? C, none. Moving on. Consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes from October 5th, 2015?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? It's good to go. Items for individual discussion. Request approval for 2016 City Council dates.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. C, none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. C, request approval to discharge mortgage for 922 Maple Street, Albion. You need a little background on that before you...
So moved.
Support.
Pardon?
Did you skip B?
Request for approval, recommendation of the local... Yes, I did.
Wait. Do that first.
Yes.
Let me back up to B before we go to C.
This is on B.
Okay.
I, as I was looking at our charter regarding local officers' compensation commission...
Yes.
The council actually does not need to vote on this. What's supposed to happen is the commission is supposed to file their recommendation with the clerk, and as long as the council does not reject it by two-thirds vote, it automatically becomes a competition.
In thirty days.
Right, correct. Thirty days from whatever they file.
Right. Okay.
So can we...
Did you hear that, Scott?
Yes.
That then begs the question, in the interest of sort of closing the books on the 2015 calendar, can we submit this like December 1st instead of in October, so that we are not increasing our pay in the current fiscal year, but that we start that pay in the new fiscal year?
It'll start thirty days.
From submission, right? So...
Exactly, but they haven't submitted it. They just...
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm asking that they submit it December 1st so that it takes into effect in January when our new fiscal budget starts.
That would be a change to everything, because we have done that.
Oh, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, in trying to help our current budget, if this is, as was stated, a slight increase in our budget, I mean, maybe it's not a lot, but I'm just...
It actually is submitted.
Oh, it's already been submitted?
No. We submit to you. We hold a meeting, we vote, we approve it as a local compensation commission, we submitted our findings to the city.
Okay.
But did you do that in writing and submitted it to the clerk?
Yes. That's why it's actually why it's for you.
You guys have a...
Got it.
Okay, all right. So we have the same letter.
And then, the way the charter is written, I mean, it just kind of stands.
Right.
Council's not allowed to set their own pay, have to use a compensation commission to do it.
Right.
But you could choose to reject it by two-thirds vote, and then it would just default to where you're already at.
Right.
You can just stay there.
Got it.
Thanks, Scott.
But then again, if it's wrote in the charter that way, we can't change it, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
And I'm thinking that you got this out of the charter.
Yes.
So...
Okay.
Okay? So this will, thirty days from now.
So B is basically giving us the choice, if we want to reject it, to allow it to appear on the agenda, to reject it, but if we take no action, it happens.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. Okay? We're all set there. I'll back up to B now. Request approval, recommendation of the local officers' compensation committee for the City of Albion pay.
Wait, no? You were saying we don't have to vote on that?
Thought we were just saying we didn't need to approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't need to vote on it.
Right.
So we need to take this off the agenda.
Unless someone wants to...
Unless to reject it.
Right, unless someone wants to reject it.
Okay. So there's no motion, no anything, so we're good to go.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right? Good. Is everybody confused?
Nope.
All right.
Any more?
Now we can go down to C. We request approval to discharge mortgage for 922 Maple Street, Albion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. And what that is, Cheryl?
Some of you who have been here for a while may recall that there had been some home improvement loans that were extended to property owners through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, MISTHA program. Most of these were for fifteen years or the passing of the homeowner. Some of them actually allowed for the loan to be dismissed after a period of time. Now, keep it in mind that some of these mortgages go back thirty-five years or more. Our record-keeping didn't necessarily remain consistent. So in regards to this property, our rec... We don't have an actual copy of and mortgage for this property for this amount, I think it's five thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars. And the reasonable thing to do would be to allow for the discharge at this point, because we don't have anything to indicate that this was one that allowed for a payment plan in regards to that amount.
Wait, what?
So our recommendation to you is to allow for the discharge of the mortgage.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yeah, so I'm still confused. So this, the property owner submitted a proposal to get a portion of a CDBG grant...
Correct.
...to renovate their property.
Right.
And it's that mortgage that we can't find records of, not the original mortgage of the house?
Correct. It's for the...
It gets added to their mortgage, is what it does.
It's like a second mortgage.
Right. And we granted this in 1983?
Correct.
Yeah.
We were going back that far?
Yeah.
Yes.
And this is a CDBG grant?
Yes.
And the state doesn't have records of this?
Well, not of the actual loan itself, and if it was one that was to be repaid or not.
Ah, okay. I hear you. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay. No further questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. D, request approval, the first reading of the ordinance, 2015-07, operating golf carts on the streets, I'm going to assume, of Albion.
The city speaks yet.
Questions?
I found a typo, just in case anybody cares. Letter K, a golf cart should not be operated on city streets during the time period from, not from, one-half hour before sunset or one-half hour after sunrise. That's all.
Okay.
Oh, I know. All right. This is, I guess, an extension of the previous ordinance that we approved a couple of weeks ago.
Right, and I guess Colin can answer more specifically in regards to the state statute that is...
It's basically very, very similar to the other ordinance that we have enacted. The reason it's being brought separately is because it's under a different state statute, so we couldn't do them in the same ordinance without it being kind of conglutered and confusing, but this was something that came at the request of Chief Kip, because apparently there's a lot of golf carts used in the city. So this just addresses when it's permissible to use those on city streets and to avoid the problems with the operation thereof.
So the sunrise-sunset is difficult, I think, for, like, for example, Albion College employees, especially this time of year, whose shift starts at seven o'clock and it's before sunrise. So I guess this ordinance is saying that they won't be allowed to ride their golf carts to other places on campus that are slightly off-campus? Is that how I'm reading it?
You type it, bro. I mean, if you guys want to make modifications to the times, that's fine. I'm just, this was a first drag, so...
So I guess it, we can, I mean, do golf carts have, some golf carts don't have lights, some other golf carts do, so perhaps we could...
Well, I guess then that's got to be a different than in the other ordinance, because the other ordinance for the other, they all have to have lights and brake lights and turn signals.
Right.
So the exception to this rule is you don't have to have any of that.
Oh, I see.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Well, then we'll just put the college employees and the teachers instead, not the players.
Yes.
I don't understand number H. At least I'm not thinking straight in my head exactly what it's trying to say. You can not pass between the lines of traffic, in other words, you can't go between two cars that are going in the same direction type thing, but you can pass on the left of traffic. I'm not, why in the world do we allow golf carts to pass in the middle of the road? I, I'm not, why, why in the world do we allow golf carts to pass in the middle of the road? Why do they not have to stay on the right? In the right lane? I don't understand that at all. That seems like we're asking for a problem.
It's just language taken from the state statute, so.
Okay. Can we remove it?
Sure, this is just a, you can make your changes now to this amendment. Am I correct?
Yeah, we can make changes, bud.
I think that bothers me because that would allow people to go around on the, pass on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
Well, I mean technically, all passing is supposed to be done.
Yes, I know that.
Right, so the question then is, is it passing, does passing imply that the vehicle you're passing is also moving? Because I read that as a, a car stops on the right side, having a conversation for whatever reason. This gives the right, the golf cart the opportunity to pass that car instead of waiting for that person to either speed up or go, so that's how I was reading it, so.
It's where my concern comes, of course, is-
In the two-lane road.
Yeah, in the two-lane road.
Right.
Because there isn't a whole lot of, uh, protection in those things.
Right.
Okay.
Any further questions on golf carts? So do we have a change or?
I'm, I'm, I'm welcome to any input from the council if you want to make.
I, I would, I, I agree with Cheryl, I think. I would just say, uh, a person operating a golf cart shall not pass between lines of traffic, nor shall they pass moving vehicles of any kind or something like that.
Left-hand side.
On the left-hand side. No, they don't, which is, yeah, they don't, so.
Could be a change of that one.
Right.
Are these vehicles going to be allowed on the sidewalks and the street?
Except unless in the use in the course of their employment. That's in, aye? So- So what that means is an Albion college staff person, facilities person can ride on the sidewalks on campus and maybe approaching campus. Am I correct?
State law says that you can't operate a motorized vehicle on a sidewalk, so no, they cannot be operated on a sidewalk. Now, sidewalks within Albion College, not the street sidewalks-
Right.
Are theirs to use how they see fit to use, so.
Okay.
On campus.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, if you're along the street, no, but through campus they can drive-
I understand what you're saying when it comes winter, they have their little plows, their little rooms and things like that. They're, they're just like we are.
Right.
But I'm saying, just in general-
Right.
To be flying down the sidewalk to go to the next point-
Right, right.
Yep, right.
Should be a known-
And that's why we're allowing them to drive in the road by passing this ordinance. Again, these vehicles cannot be operated on the state highways, they can only be operated on our side streets.
They have to go across ninety-nine.
So, so thinking of somebody going down Michigan Avenue, passing, I mean, that's not going to happen. This is all the little side streets and, so.
Okay.
So then should I be on a public sidewalk?
They're all public sidewalks.
Well, it's-
Well, not that-
Public sidewalks on campus.
Well, but in, in-house, they can.
Right. Yep.
Oh, so you're asking about whether we should on a public side?
To change it, so the-
Yeah.
Yeah, because the quad is not a public.
Yeah, so add the word "public" before the word "sidewalk" on aye.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, Cheryl. And the unless used in the course of their employment would protect them if they've got a plow in front?
I don't see a golf cart with a plow on it, but, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, some of the golf carts, I think, some of them, they use those to go weed whip and-
Right.
And things like that.
Yeah, some of their vehicles are-
Like I said, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, we just gotta be cautious-
Right.
With them things jumping down on a sidewalk.
Some of their vehicles are close between an ORV and a golf cart. It's hard to say what they are, but, yeah.
Okay.
Okay? So we need those changes put in before or?
Well, I'm curious, do, are we leaving the time period thing in A, or did you want to change that in B?
Well, if they don't have lights, I'd, I'd rather keep it in and, and just-
I know campus safety uses theirs throughout the night, but generally they don't operate theirs on the street, they operate it on their college sidewalks.
Right.
So, I don't know that that's a real issue, and I agree that unless they've got full lights and turn signals, they probably shouldn't be operating on the road after dark.
Right, right.
So then what you can do, as far as tonight, is you can do one vote to approve the changes that we just discussed and then another vote to approve the ordinance.
You want to do that tonight?
Yes.
Or you want to bring it back?
I'll have it, well, either way you want to do it.
Let's do it now.
Might as well do it now with the changes and be done with it and it doesn't have to come back, so.
Yeah, that's right, second reading. We have a second reading, but, yeah.
Colin, there's also a typo on page two, that's number H, that first line. Two-way street, oh.
Yeah. So I move that we accept this, uh, ordinance as amended. Support.
Moved and supported. Do you have the changes? You need anything cleared up before we do? Okay? Okay? If not, we'll go ahead with a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed. Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Alright. Okay. E, discussion of the new evaluation process informed. Cheryl?
Well, this was at the request of Councilmember Brown. I don't know if there's anything in particular you wanted me to cover.
Um, well, I just want to say, you know, we received this, I guess, a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, I, I read through it, I was, I was pleased, I think that was one of the, um, uh, one of the things that I've always pushed for several councils to make sure that we have, um, quality evaluations because it helps us, um, be better. Um, and I just, I just had a couple of questions, so, um, the first one was like, when do you intend to, like, implement this?
It's already started.
Okay, great. And then, um, I remember reading the email, there was a, if I remember correctly, there was a comment where this is the standard form, but if there was like a specialized one, like in that particular department, let's say, um, would you swap it out for the general one, or you just, would you do that in addition to the general?
In addition to.
Okay. And then, um, one of the questions I, I thought about is, um, I don't know if that's the place to really bring it up, but like, like, um, retirement, I, I don't know if that's really a, a place to do an evaluations, but, um, do we have a, a, a process in place to kind of, um, keep track of, you know, are you considering that? Because, you know, every year, I mean, evaluation's a good time to do that. Is that something that we can integrate, or what are your, what's your thinking on that?
I believe there's something very, um, basic that's already in place, but I do want to take a closer look at that so we can get some more meaningful input from individuals-
Okay.
As they are moving on to their next phase of life.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. My question is, uh, I know the buck stops with you, um, in drafting this out, um, did any of the department heads or the, uh, staff or employees, uh, kind of get to take a look at it and see how they felt about some of it?
It was shared with everyone, um, and I did solicit input from the, I'll call it the, our leadership team.
Okay.
Um, so we did get some additional comments and those were incorporated. And basically I wanted to establish a baseline of what my expectations are for our administration and how we treat each other, as well as, um, the workers that they may be having a report to them. So it's, um, setting that standard as well as, so there's two versions. The first one is for the department heads and management personnel. And that's a bit more intensive in terms of, um, understanding and evaluating their work methods and quality leadership and, um, their supervisory skills and things of that nature. Then there's another one, the core performance appraisal for the employees. And that one is, um, a bit more spelled out for them so that everyone can see on a scale from one to five, know where they are and where the opportunities for improvement also, um, exist. And all of the evaluations start with a self-evaluation, so we ask the individual to also reflect on where they are, where they would like to go, and what, um, management can be doing to support their ongoing, um, growth and development as well.
Thank you, very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further question? If not, we'll go to F, discussion of downtown businesses retaining insurance on buildings.
So, I, I, I also asked for this, um, so, you know, in the past few years, you know, weather, you know, it's usually weather-related. We've had buildings that have had, you know, sustained, you know, serious damage, structural damage, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm not a fan of, of forcing more expenses on people, but, um, when you have situations that can basically mar downtown, um, if a building collapses, um, that really concerns me, and so I, I was talking to, um, spoke with the, the city attorney about options, and I, I guess, um, he has more to say.
Yeah, well, obviously we've, we've had this problem with the downtown buildings and, um, we've tried a number of approaches. We've tried, um, sending out road enforcement, we've tried, um, doing direct lawsuits against building owners and, you know, some of the problems that we run into, a lot of the buildings are owned by, for example, LLCs and, um, once we file a lawsuit, they just stop paying the taxes, stop taking care of it, and it defaults to the county, and then we're either we end up with the property or the land bank ends up with the property. And what I did was I reached out to the, uh, other municipal attorneys in the states to see if anyone else has had this, um, problem, and they have. Um, and they, at, at least several of them indicated to me, um, that the, the issue might be addressed at least as far as rental property goes. And unfortunately, since, since I last talked to you, Councilmember Brown, what they sent me, um, wasn't quite what they purported it to be. It looks like, um, at, at least the city of, uh, Ypsilanti has, has regulated this issue as far as, um, rental properties go with, um, requiring them to maintain fire insurance. Um, which may be a start, um, you know, certainly one property right here in the corner of Cass and Superior jumps out at me as that, that would have been addressed. But largely what they sent me was for residential properties, which isn't as helpful as I would have liked, but, um, what, uh, what I did find is the, uh, the cities that are, uh, addressing this through rental properties are, um, are, uh, requiring what's called rental certifications, which would be a, a detailed, um, set of ordinances that regulate rental properties, and then within those ordinances, we require, uh, the maintenance of, uh, for example, fire insurance. And so that might at least in a small part be able to address some of the issues with, um, some of the properties, because obviously, like, again, this example right here in the corner, I mean, nothing's happened with that building since it had its fire. Uh, but had it had fire insurance, it'd either be demoed or brought back up to the code or both. So unfortunately, um, I wish my info was a little bit more helpful, but there isn't, um, our authority to, to curtail the problem has to be based on either a state statute or some other enabling act, and
Just isn't.
Unfortunately, there just isn't one, um, but hopefully through this rental aspect, we can at least partially address it.
Lynn?
Who would be responsible for? There's a, uh, the building down by Fetteco where we were at Festival and Forks time, and the, the bricking was falling off.
Yep, she's addressing it.
Right.
Who would be responsible for-
The dentist.
Someone being hit by a brick falling off a building?
It would probably start with her.
Yeah, it'll start with the owner of the building.
Yep.
Who would?
It would start with her, the owner.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Why, did somebody get hit? Did somebody get hit?
No, it was just what?
Oh, okay. Yes, Maurice.
My question for Colin, and this is just for my notes on follow-up. You're the legal expert, but you may have answered it. My question was going to be a legal opinion from you on our legal position that we can take. I think you said there is no rule of law where we could, um, require the businesses downtown to have insurance on those buildings. Am I correct?
Well, I think we can, I, I, I think we can address some of the businesses. Because some of the businesses are rental properties, and I think we'll be able to regulate the rental properties. Now, if it's a, a business that owns the property, we might not be able to address that outside of our normal, uh, property maintenance codes and, and things of that nature, but the example that I'll give you, uh, that I at least was, um, I thought it was interesting what, uh, Ypsilanti and I think, uh, the city of Meskega have done is on rental properties, they will require the maintenance of fire insurance, or in the alternative, um, in some, in some cases when they have vacant properties, they require that the property owner place money in escrow every month, um, so that, uh, if something does happen to the property, there's money there to basically, um, demo the property or, or break the property or, so, and maybe, and those are things, you know, given our track record of dilapidated properties, maybe we just need to do something on that, but.
Well, yeah, I, I appreciate it. I just wanted to bring it to our attention because, you know, I see, it's like, it's like consistency, consist- consistently, consistent, ah!
Consistently.
Thank you. Um, we're having, you know, we're having issues with buildings downtown, it just, you know, I mean, we're, we're, people are investing in, and, um, in structures, but then, you know, if, if you renovated this building and the building right next to you goes down, you know, it's not good, so. Um, and I, and I know we had, I don't know where it ranked on the list of priorities, but I know we at one time talked about, um, rental certification, so.
Still on the list.
Yeah.
Yes, Cheryl?
I just, Colin, this one's for you too. If, for instance, with the building that Lynn just talked about, um, the brick had come down, and we would go back to the owner of the building and say, this is your responsibility. Because those are public sidewalks, if it happened on the public sidewalk, is there a liability there for the, for the city also?
I would say it would depend on whether or not we were on notice of the problem ahead of time. If we were aware that, that there were structural issues with the building, and we didn't take any kind of enforcement action on it, and the bricks came down, then they might try to hold us liable for something like that. Now, if we had no, you know, if, if there's a storm and a brick blows up and hits somebody, then, you know, I mean, we can't do anything about that, but I would, the, the longer we know about something, the, the more potential liability we would have.
And many, if, if, if I'm not mistaken, there are many of our buildings that have some of those kind of shaky facades at different spots. That could be a real problem for us.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, I mean, and, and the council, I mean, um, you don't see a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff, but, I mean, I've got stacks of judgments against property in the city that we've sued for maintaining public nuisances because of uh, problems with the roof, problems with bricks falling down, roofs caving in, uh, walls falling down. Problem is, I, you know, I can get judgments for demolition and, and abatement until I'm blue in the face, and we can do liens against property, but all they do is not pay the taxes and they revert to the county, and then they don't even own the property anymore. I mean, I've got, I've got benchmarks actually out for probably a dozen property owners in the city because of property, but, I mean, there, there's only, there's only so much we can do.
There's no other way we can handle it though, I mean, more or less.
Well, with, with, I mean, with that, but I think, like I said, the, I think the insurance, at least the fire insurance, would be a, a small step in the right direction. Because I know that there's a handful of properties where we've had those fire issues.
Yes.
So.
Mayor and council, if I, if I might, um, there's an informal work group that has been pulled together in response to some of the situations, because we realized that many of our commercial buildings downtown are aging. And they are, um, to, many of them are falling into disrepair. So one of the things that we're doing is working with the EDC, working with, um, even the chamber, but especially with, um, the county treasurer and the land bank in terms of, one, assessing who owns most of these properties. So we're working on getting a GIS map to identify who are the property owners, what are the current conditions. So we have one of the interns pointing out, naturally taking pictures of the buildings, and then from there, instead of just being punitive, trying to put some resources together so we can lurk, work with like the USDA and MISTHA and the EDC and, um, other organizations, and local banks even, to try to put some financing mechanisms available to them, so it's not just a stick, but we can offer a carrot. You know, these are some options available to you to get these buildings up to code, so that we can work with them, but we do recognize that this is a growing problem with our buildings. But we do recognize that this is a growing problem with our buildings.
Yes.
Colin, this is for you. As I leave here tonight, I have to contact two business owners now. We describe them as a storefront with apartments as a brownstone. There's a storefront downstairs, we got our apartments upstairs. The renter gets insurance and that takes care of their personal problem, but I should be encouraging these people to get the fire insurance. But we have no legal position to enforce them having fire insurance at this point. Am I correct?
Right now, no, we don't, we don't have any ordinance that requires them to do that.
And there's a difference between the business property and the storefront property, if it's just a plain business with no apartments in it.
I, I'm exploring applying the rental aspect to commercial property as well.
All right.
So, you know, for example, if Councilman French owns a building on the corner of Superior and Cass, and I decide I want to open an ice cream shop in there, I don't want to buy the property, but I want to rent the property from him, you know, applying that as an aspect of rental.
Okay.
And, and enforcing, uh, you know, maintaining insurance on it. Hopefully we can make it work. I know we can make it work with residential properties and I'm trying to make it work with commercial.
But that's one of the problems we run into with a rental property is they turn the water bills and all that turned over to the renter, the renter takes off and the building owner has no responsibility of having to pay anything either. As far as the fire insurance, that probably good, something I don't think we do unless you've started. Do we charge for our fire runs? We could start doing that for these buildings downtown, like this one across, not that it would have done us any good because they walked away from the building, but we could start there with recouping these fires that we don't do. We don't send bills because we, we do it because people pay taxes and we feel it's kind of a fair shake.
Right.
But a lot of these owners downtown don't even live here. They don't even care.
But they still pay taxes.
Maybe, you know, we end up with that. But they're in it for a profit, okay?
Sure.
Where your homeowners, you're not there for a profit. You follow what I'm saying?
I do, but I'm not sure I agree because I think, I mean, maybe nowadays with the way housing market is, but I think that the tradition has been you buy a house at some price, you live in it for 35 years and you retire and you sell it for far more than, than you, what you bought it for. And so you are making a profit. So I, I just worry, I mean, I'm not saying I disagree with you, I'm just like, eh.
Well, when you get to the downtown, it's a little different because down there, we're getting owners and businesses confused. A lot of these buildings are owned by somebody that doesn't have a business in it.
Oh, right, no, I understand.
And I think they both have a responsibility. The owner has a responsibility to the renters, I would think, you know, on those conditions.
I just don't want to, I don't want to double jeopardy a building owner who already pays taxes and now has to pay if there's a fire in his building.
Fully understand. The problem is what happens when you run into all the 501(c)(3) that don't pay taxes?
Right.
So.
Right, but we have insurance.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, and I think we just ran into that with about 10 buildings down there, but.
I know there's some municipalities that charge people if they do a high-risk activity for their own rescues. If we could charge people that don't choose to have it insured, then that would kind of like me jumping off of El Capitan. If I have to be rescued, then I have to pay for the helicopter, the paramedics and everything else.
Right.
And that's, that's actually through the state that they passed that. So we could always look at possibly charging people who char, choose not to insure. You know, because that's making themselves high risk at that point.
Right.
Well, I think we're all on the agreeance that something needs to be done, so. Right?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Gee, discussion policy for employees to express concern without fear of re- retribution of, uh, being penalized.
I asked for that to be on what I actually was trying to express and didn't do it correctly is the hope that we could have a study group, that we could sit down, maybe have some individuals from the city, the employees themselves, somebody represented and where they could maybe have an open forum where there could be some discussion. I know that the evaluations I read were really excellent, but I'd love to see it where the employees were able to have some feedback to the supervisors themselves and maybe open a dialogue between the supervisors and the employees.
Are you getting involved in personnel?
Yes.
My question is, um, is that not covered, with all due respect, uh,
No, I understand.
Is that not covered in the collective bargaining agreement with, with their unions? Normally, Human Resources has a policy for us to follow, but it's agreed with, with the different unions and, and the employees. I'm not sure, I'm just asking.
Well, what I'm specifically, and the reason I asked for it was after the meeting a couple of weeks or maybe a month ago, when Mayor Domingo said that someone had approached him with a letter, blah, 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 um, I was actually approached to the clinic at work by someone who's also not in the union and he said he was one of the people involved with the letter. I encouraged him to contact either a supervisor or Cheryl Mitchell, both of which he declined. I acknowledge that it's hard to help people who won't step forward and say, this is who I am and this is how I feel, but it's obviously a problem, um, where people aren't feeling comfortable. And the only thing I could think of was possibly having a study group where there could be some dialogue and some ideas at least, and hopefully someone as a city employee coming forward and saying, I'd like to participate.
I can't see any harm in that, just.
Kicking it to this and around kicking.
Well, and I think one thing about that is just remember, the bottom line is with the committee, regardless who's on it, because of our contract and our charter, the punishment is still left with the city manager. Now, if they feel comfortable coming to a committee and talking about that, which is great, and I, and I think they need a freedom of someplace to come to, but we, you know, whoever the committee is, does not make those decisions. They take their concerns to the city manager and the people that are responsible in that. And you sat down and you talk about that and then, you know, you come up with a, you know, a solution to that.
I thought that's the director of the Human Resources job. I really did. You know, that's why we have a director of Human Resources, to handle those sorts of issues. Now, maybe it's not wanting to walk into a building to do that reporting, but that, that could be handled in some other way. I just.
I didn't know that was the Human Resources. They do things like medical, your Blue Cross, Blue Shields, your insurance and things like that.
Right, but I mean, I think about, I think about the Human Resources office at their college. That's where complaints are lodged. And the Human Resources, then it becomes, for union, non-union, it just, that's where Human Resources is, if you're a worker and you have a complaint, you start with Human Resources. If you go to, you go to your supervisor, if you're afraid to go to your supervisor, you go to the Human Resources Director and they then pass it up to the, to the RVP of Business Operations, but in this case it will be our city manager.
If I, if I could interject, um, I guess I need some clarification on if this is a concern from a represented union member or is it someone who's not a member of the union? So that, they're still technically covered by the union, um, and the union has a grievance process. And I received an unsolicited telephone call from the business agent from the Ask Me Union specifically making certain that we all understood that we can't do anything that interferes with their, their, their contract, which already has provisions on how they are to handle any of their concerns. And that applies whether you are a union member or not. But as everyone knows, I have an open door policy. And someone came into my office today, an employee with some concerns. So I, if they're hesitant to come to me now, I don't know what's going to happen that would encourage them to come to a larger group.
Well, that was why I was suggesting the study group, maybe there'd be a way to maybe meetings, maybe there could be something where each, like the, the cemetery, the parks or ADPS or any, each individual department where the supervisor's saying, this is how you go about it. When I spoke to the gentleman that approached me at the, um, clinic, I was very specific with my suggestions on how to approach it and it was of no help whatsoever. He had, at that point, I had the impression he considered me more of the collective problem than a solution. So I'm just thinking that if we could get together or put some people, I don't even have to be involved in it, together where there's some dialogue and shooting some ideas around, maybe they would feel that there was more of a, we might have an opportunity to learn a way to talk to each other without it being a you said, I said, he said, she said thing.
Yes.
For me, hearing this, it, it seems like it's not really a organizational problem with the one that we have. It sounds like some of the employees would like to be heard and I think you have a good idea that outside of the form of our process that they got together, whether it was all across the street and sat down and got some concerned citizens and says, hey, this is how we feel and shared it with Cheryl. I mean, I can't see, uh, this is an olive branch, I'm thinking, let them get some things off their chest. That's what it sounds like to me.
Karen?
So I just wanted to, just to clarify something. So in, in the previous situation, I, from what I understand, you were saying that someone who was not in the union was concerned about a decision that the union people made. Was that, was that the issue? Is that, is that what you were suggesting?
Right.
They don't feel comfortable going to the union because they don't, they're not part of that. They don't get a vote or anything else to say that, but they knew that was one of their options once they opt out of the union. So they really don't have any say in the matter of what, you know, goes on. Whatever the union people say, this is what we want in our contract, the non-union people have to follow that. They have no say in it. But not all of it has to do with the contract. There's some of it, most of it, sounds to me like there's a lot of personal things that go on between individuals, you know, and things like that. And all they want is someplace to get heard, somebody different other than their supervisor or their director or Cheryl. And, and I think what we're asking here is that's fine, come to us and talk about that, but we're not going to make a decision. That decision is made by the city manager.
I guess I'm still confused. I mean, I, I, everyone has the right of free speech. They can talk, they can gather and talk, that, that's not the issue. I, my concern is, is that at some point, if an issue is going to get addressed, then our city manager has to do it. So what benefit is there if, if an employee has a complaint, um, about their supervisor or what have you? Eventually, the identity of that employee is going to have to be known in order for that complaint to be fixed.
Okay.
Right? So why not just let the, why, if, if that's the case, why can't the structure be that an employee who has a problem with their supervisor or what have you can go and have a conversation with the city manager?
And what happens if it doesn't go any further than that? How would we ever know?
But we've been down this road, Joe. Our, our job is not to handle personnel issues of the city.
And that's just what I said, Andy. I, I said they can come and talk to us, we're not going to make a decision.
Right.
We're going to take that to the city manager.
Right.
The city manager will make that decision.
Right, but why do we have to be the intermediary?
Uh, because I guess some of those people are asking us to. If you don't want to be, I'm sure they won't object to that.
That's fine. I just, I just think that what I, what I worry about is that, that we will be breaking down a structure that's in place for handling.
Obviously, there's some breaking down already going on or this wouldn't have been brought to us.
I think it's an unwillingness of employees to follow the, the channels and structures that have been created by our city government.
Which in turn they have and they have failed. Or we wouldn't be at this question.
Or they perceive it as failed.
I know, they, they both have their hands up, I'm sorry.
I'm not going to say the name of the past, uh, city manager slash public service director. I used to talk to the guys at, uh, Speedway, I'd talk to them wherever I see them. And my take from him was Maurice, they're like that. This group will not, this group, this group will not support that group. And I recognize, this is not a problem that just started under Cheryl's tenure. It's been here. I've, I've dealt with it before. I still agree with Becky. Outside of the process going through our city manager, I, I'm hearing that these people want someplace, I'm going to use the word vent. If it's with Scott Brown and Bearman, they vent, okay, then they give them some advice or they come to Cheryl and say, this is how they feel, they don't, they're afraid to come to you. Cheryl was made aware of it and Cheryl says, well, you're going to have to talk to them to come to me. I, I, I really think it can be worked out, I just don't, you know.
I get.
Yes.
So I guess in, in my mind, I think there's like two situations where, and there may be more, but the two things that come to mind are a situation where, let's say you have, you know, a complaint for misconduct, right? So somebody did something, another employee to me, and then that goes through the process. And then the other thing, you might have a complaint about kind of an operational complaint, right? So like, my supervisor made this decision and, you know, it wasn't wrong per se, but I, it could have been done this way. I, I, I guess, I mean, honestly, I, 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 I'm, I'm fine when people come and talk to me, but I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable making that official. I, I, I think if, if, I mean, unfortunately, I think most workplaces, I'm not saying most workplaces, but I think some workplaces you might have those kind of situations, but it's like, I, I, I think that really comes to the supervisor to really kind of sort that out because, um, yeah, because I, like I said, there's, there's a procedure in place if there's like a misconduct complaint, but I think if it's an operational thing, then you just talk to that with the supervisor. So like, for example, with this issue with the, the union thing, that, I mean, that's really like a, to me, that's an operational kind of thing. So, I mean, I, I don't see how you circumvent that, you know, if someone's not happy with that. Because, and, and I guess my question is, is that, is that the nature of, of that complaint? That, right?
No, I'm not suggesting that people approach us and that we interfere with Cheryl's job in any way. I'm suggesting having a study group that we discuss the possibility of a labor board or something that can act as a liaison for people that are uncomfortable. Cheryl, of course, would have the final decision, I'm not challenging that. I'm saying that some people don't feel that they're represented. Some people don't feel that if they come and complain, that they're going to be heard. So sometimes having someone who can go, okay, I'll come with you. And I'm not saying any council person, I'm not suggesting that. In fact, I would actually, at least for the city council people, I have no interest in being on that board. But I do think having people on the board, maybe a city employee, maybe someone like Scott, something like that, where there are people that are from different areas, I'm not trying to get, I'm not trying to put, interject the city council into the business of daily running. What I'm saying is there needs to be dialogue between employee and employer because any, any business is only as good as its employee. And if they're, if we're not making the effort to help them, then I don't see what the point is.
Colin?
I have two thoughts that I'll offer the council as the council's legal advisor. One, I think the council needs to tread somewhat lightly if Ask Me is making unsolicited phone calls, warning the manager to comply with the contract. That's red flag, keep that in mind. And I guess my other thought is this. Everyone, I mean, there's no question here that everybody's on the same page that, you know, the council sets policy for the, for the officers and administrative staff to follow. My thought is this, if, if the council feels that, that, uh, there's some kind of breakdown in communication, I mean, the council can certainly direct Cheryl to work on that and maybe that's the most direct course of action. But, uh, I think we're, we're entering into, into a touchy, somewhat dangerous area here with our, with our unions and so on, just cautioning the council here.
Yes.
My final question is, whoever this non-union personnel is, were they in a position to opt into the union? I heard somebody say they opt out, could they have opted in?
They were already in the union. The option was to opt out if you wanted to. Am I correct?
That, that's a choice.
Right.
You have to live with the choice.
Right. Under, understand.
Okay, I'm, I'm bet.
Yep.
Also, okay.
But I want to give the employees a fair chance to talk to other people than the ones that they feel uncomfortable with, especially as I brought up before, when you're told you cannot talk to those people.
Especially, as I brought up before, when you're told you cannot talk to those people, that makes a challenge right there. And that makes me think there's a breakdown someplace, if people say you can't talk to these people. Was, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I've spoken with the directors of our departments just to reaffirm that at no time have I ever instructed them to convey a message that they could not speak directly to any of you. They have the right to speak to whoever they choose to. However, when it comes to giving them direct instructions, that is not appropriate, and those need to go through the chain of command. And that was reaffirmed, that was reaffirmed in the policy that we established. So, if someone misinterpreted that, to think that they can't speak to whoever they choose to, then I'm trying to reaffirm that that is not true. All of our employees can speak to whoever they want to. But the ball finally stops with me. Either, and there is a chain of command, they need to speak with their general foreman, if they have one, their deputy, um, director, and their director. If that doesn't resolve it, then it comes to me. Now, if it involves some of those people in that chain of command, then it might go directly to me, and I understand that. So, some of the onus goes on to the employees. If they choose not to bring their concerns to any of those people I just listed, and they just run and sit and complain about it, there's nothing I can do, because it hasn't come to my attention. So, at least I ask that you give me the opportunity to respond to your concerns, if you have them. My door is open.
Thank you. Yeah?
Yes. So, from hearing you mayor and hearing Cheryl, can I assume, at this point in time, there has not been any inquiries to establish that these complaints were founded? At this point, they're unfounded? We haven't found any truth in these allegations? Well, the problem, it stops, is what happens. You know, they might say something to me that Cheryl's not aware of. I bring it to Cheryl, I never get the end result, whatever became of it, what happened. So, therefore, in, 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 in this form with us, it, it wasn't established. I mean, Cheryl has stated, and her department heads are here, they're verifying that they never told an employee, don't talk to Jim, don't talk to Harry. Am I correct? That is what I've taken from this. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. You know. Thank you, Cheryl. And, and how can we get to the bottom line of that, if we don't ask those people if that's what was said? Then if they come and they say, well, yes, they did say, then you're gonna get this.
That's right.
But the ball stops with Cheryl, far as we're concerned. Well, and that's what I'm saying. And, you know, like I said, you know, her response is, they didn't say it. If they didn't say it, you're saying those people said that they're lying. So, we're gonna get into this contest of going back and forth with, I believe my directors more than I believe my employees.
No, I believe whatever the facts present themselves as, it doesn't matter who, who said what.
But I guess.
What can be substantiated.
I guess, but my question is, is basically, okay, I mean, that's, to me, that's kind of a side issue. I mean, was there an actual complaint? Because like, to me, like I, like I said earlier, when I think of these, when I'm, when I'm hearing, there's basically complaints about, you know, if you have any form of misconduct, and you have a complaint about, okay, I don't like how this, you know, this particular policy or this particular idea. And so, I mean, I mean, I, I don't think we have to go to the others, you know, the other extreme and say, okay, we need to have some kind of, you know, council notification. Because I guess what, what I'm saying is, how can the administration even look into an issue if they don't know who, like, who's bringing it? Like, you know, I'm sorry. Joe?
Go ahead.
I, I guess, here's, here's my thought process with this. And, and, and I'm understanding what, what the mayor's saying, and I'm understanding what the manager's saying, and, and all the concerns here. Here's what I would suggest, and, and we'll just use the example, we've got a non-union employee that has an issue that he feels like he's not getting addressed. I mean, in an ideal situation, the way it's supposed to work is he goes to his director, and if the director doesn't resolve it, it goes to the manager, and, and so on and so forth. But let's just assume in this case, that for some reason, that non-union employee does not want to talk to his director. Okay. And besides, he feels more comfortable talking to Councilmember Brown about his issue, okay. What I, what should happen then is, Councilmember Brown should just take that issue to Cheryl. And at that point, Cheryl, whether she deals with it herself, or delegates something to the director, you know, will take care of it. Now, if the council has a concern about whether matters get handled, I would say that Councilmember Brown certainly would go back to the manager, or go back to that employee and say, okay, uh, did your issue get resolved, or, you know, whatever came out of that? And maybe the manager determined that, hey, there was a problem and it got resolved, maybe the manager determined that, um, the complaint had no merit to it, or conflicted with the contract, or whatever, what have you. But, if, if the issue doesn't get resolved, I mean, that's an issue that you guys address with Cheryl. And if, you know, and, I guess that's my two cents here. I mean, it, it, I think either way, you guys need to take it to, need to take it to Cheryl.
And, yeah, and, and I think, 'cause I mean, I think really it comes, it comes to an issue of, I mean, how, how, I guess how we handle citizen issues, right? I mean, I, I, yeah, people say, okay, there's, this needs to be done, send it to the manager, send it to the department, carbon copy the department head, and, you know, you know, wait for response, right? And so, I think, to me, like I said, I think there's just two, I mean, there's one, there's a complaint where you have misconduct kind of complaints, and there's a kind of operational complaint. And I guess, in an operational way, I mean, I, I don't, because if someone complains to me, I'm not gonna go and like enforce what that person wants on administration, you know, I can't do that by myself, and, and I, I wouldn't do that way, because like I said, there's always kind of two sides. And I think the other thing is, and I'm, I'm not in a position to, um, I guess, investigate, right? So, I can't go and, and, um, really investigate both sides. So, like, when someone, when I hear a complaint or something, I'm really taking, okay, that's a concern, and people are better positioned to, to look into it, to look into it. So, I mean, in, in, and so back to, I guess, this earlier situation, was the, the concern was that there was a change in terms of the contract, right, collective bargaining, and that that person was not in favor of it. That, was that the, I don't understand that was what the complaint was about?
That was just one of the issues.
Okay, so I'm saying, in, in that case, if you're not in the union, it's, it's.
Well, anyway, I think we can clear this up. Right quick, and in a hurry. Can city employees talk to the council people?
Yes.
They can?
Yes.
Can they do that without coming to you, going to their directors, or to their foreman?
They can have any conversation they want to have with whomever they want to have. If they're looking to get directions on how to do their job, then it's not appropriate to be speaking with you. If it's a concern they want to express, if they want a general conversation, or update, whatever, I don't care, sure, they can talk with you and anyone else.
Okay. And if they have a complaint, I think, if, if anybody comes to you, they have a complaint, they don't want to face Cheryl, whether they don't want to face them. The words that we should say to them is, give us the complaint, we'll take it to Cheryl. We'll address it with Cheryl. Even though that employee is gonna end up facing Cheryl, because from the beginning of this whole conversation, I said, Cheryl is the bottom line. I did not say the council was gonna take direct action to do anything to anybody. The direct action is, somebody comes to you with a complaint, you take it down, you note it. If they don't want to talk to somebody individually, you can do that. They'll take it to Cheryl from that point. Then you follow up, or you ask Cheryl, can you let me know what the, you know, situation was, or anything else within a reasonable amount of time? I, I think that would take care of that, and I think that'll clarify things. I think the whole thing started is when they said, nobody could talk to us. Period. And now you're saying it's okay?
I've always said it was okay.
Okay, well, obviously, that word did not get back to the employees. Okay? So, I think the field is open now, that city employees can talk to the council, but we're not allowed to make the decision of the matter, what they're bringing to us, without taking it to Cheryl first. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just don't like it, but that's all right.
Well, I, you know, yes, Cheryl?
I just don't want us to be doing.
Well, I think one of the things that we have to do, and it, we've done it here, and we, we did it a couple of weeks ago, is that we have to present a united front. It's like when you have children, and your children try to ask their father one thing, and then the other chop around for the right answer.
Right.
We can't be doing that.
Right.
And I think that's what we have to understand, and what our employees have to understand, is that we can't be doing that. We've got to be following the chain of command, and Cheryl the buck stops with. So, you know, they can talk to anybody they want, but it isn't gonna do them any good to tell me one thing, and then not want to go talk to Cheryl, and, you know, that, that doesn't work.
And I can tell you, one of the biggest challenges I've had is, from my directors, is that people will come to me directly, because they'll, they won't get the answer they wanted from their directors, and they'll say, we're taking it to Cheryl. So, that happens, and one of my first questions I have to ask them is, did you take it to your direct report? And when you send it to me, that's going to be my first question, did you give it to your director? Did you allow them an opportunity to address it? And if not, that's where it's going to end up. So, it only makes sense, even if they approach you directly, to ask them, did you take it to your director? And if you didn't take it to your director, did you first approach Cheryl before you brought it to us? Because that's where it's gonna end up, no matter who they go to first.
It's no different than when somebody calls me that's not in my precinct, well, I don't have a precinct, but I ask them first, did you ask your precinct representative first? You know, that's always my first question to them, because, or if somebody calls me from out of a precinct, and, and I, I always ask them to ask the, you know, person from their precinct to do that, you know. Yes, Cullen?
The one thing that I would add, obviously, we've had the conversation on, everybody's on the same page, and everyone's free to talk to council members and things, ultimately end up with Cheryl. But the one thing I would add to that is, particularly for the union employees, that they follow the terms of their union contracts, in that if they have a grievance they need to lodge, there is a process for that, and, you know, hey, they wanna have a conversation with the mayor, or the Councilwoman Kraus, or whatever, sure, but they also need to follow the terms of the union contract and that grievance process, if, if they have a complaint.
Correct. If they have a grievable complaint, yes, Cheryl?
The one other thing that I wanted to say is that if something has, oh, you know, horrible has happened, there's also the whistleblower act. I mean, if it's getting to that point, then maybe they need to get Cullen involved. I think, I'm, I'm sure you appreciated that. But if we get to the point of the whistleblower, of needing to enact the whistleblower act, then you, you, we really are looking at that. I don't think we've gotten into that mess yet, ever, hopefully, never.
Well, I think just a clarification, that it's okay to talk to us, without facing any, you know, punishment of any kind, I think clears up a lot of, now I think they'll feel more open, being able to talk to us. But we have to understand, when you talk to them, it also has to come back to the right, you know, people. Now, I wouldn't take their problem to a director, I would take it to you. Then it's up to you to deal with it from that point.
Exactly.
So, I, I think that right there, with the open forum, that they can come and discuss what they need to discuss with us as council people, would be, you know, acceptable. And I think we have that cleared, and I think all the employees need to know that. Okay? If there is no further, we'll move to the next one, which is really short and sweet.
Based on the handout, yes.
Well, uh, the taxi ordinances, which meant for the one person that wanted it, uh, does not need it anymore, they, they have taken the stance that they only do social security work. When did you talk to them last?
I talked to them today, so, um.
Then you tell them what they said today.
Well, yeah, I spoke to one of the owners, um, and he said that, yeah, that they're not, yeah, they're not operating as just commercial, you know, direct customer kind of thing. They're basically helping people make, you know, these appointments and being reimbursed, um, for, for that. One of the, I guess, the reason I bring it up, like I said, we have, you know, later conversations to kind of talk about it, 'cause, um, and this goes, I guess, it's all a part of the, the whole thing about, um, making sure that we have charter ordinances, policies, everything that are up to date, um, and, and relevant to Albion right now. And I guess, the example, the package was from Ann Arbor?
I actually gave you, I gave you two ordinances from kind of two opposite ends of this question, maybe you got Ann Arbor and Grand Rapids.
And so, I guess I wanted to just kind of start the conversation about, um, what options are available, right? Because, I mean, I mean, his thing was, you know, um, the fees, what, seventy-five dollars per vehi, per vehicle, per year, right? And, you know, I don't know what the market thing is, but I'm sure Albion's different, right? So, I just wanted to kind of know, like, I guess our ordinance, you know, when, when was it established? When's the last time it was modified, you know, and what other options we, we had? Because I, I hate to see, um, I know there was Mr. Benjamin at one point, he's deceased, and there may have been some other people who tried it, um, so, yeah.
Is this a relative of yours?
No.
Oh. Well, the whole thing started, was, you know, they got set up in Homer. They were approved in Homer. And that's where they run their business out of, okay? They were called from an Albion person
Right.
to pick them up.
Right.
Then they came back, and the person, whoever it was, complained about the price. Complained about the license not being under dash, or something. And something else.
Right.
Well, so then they called, and I'm sitting here going, wait a minute. They're established out of Homer, why would you buy a permit out of Albion? It wouldn't be any different than I see Colonial Taxi coming, I don't know where they come out of, but they come into town as well. And I don't see them stopping by to pick up a license, just to pick up one or two people, and head back out of town.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, and that's kind of where the,
So, yeah.
you know, buck kind of got lied. It's, uh, they're not established in Albion itself, they were called by Albion residents. Yes?
So, that's an interesting question, because I, I think about, um, other cities that have taxi cab services that drop off and pick up people not in their town.
Yeah. They have to stop and buy a license to go into that town.
But do they need such? I don't know if they, they do, so I'm thinking, no. So, I think the complaint then, that we receive, must have to go back to Homer.
Well.
That's where, that's where that taxi cab is registered, and so, i.e., not our problem. I, I think the complaint, I mean, that, there's that complaint, I mean, that's between, I mean, Right. the business, but I guess my question is, even if they're based somewhere else, they have to have a. No.
Why should they have to have a permit in Albion?
Is, that's the case, right? No.
My understanding of our current ordinance, and I will rely on Cullen to get to the more details, is that if they operate in Albion, they're required to have our local license, which requires seventy-five dollars per vehicle. And that's whether they're picking up or dropping off.
Okay, so they can base another community.
Right.
I, I can tell you that the other communities that I've seen, for example, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, two opposite ends of the states, both require licenses to operate taxi cabs within city limits.
Within their city limits.
Correct. So, but, I mean, here's, I mean, when I was looking at these, here's, I mean, for example, what, what I liked about, and, and, you have to forgive me, I can't remember which of these, I, I believe it was Ann Arbor's. They have set up, for example, a reciprocity with surrounding communities, where, for example, if, uh, someone's licensed in Ipsy, they can come to Ann Arbor, because they're cooperating communities, and they don't have to, they just have to have their Ipsy license displayed in there. Right. Good there. But. But we don't have that set up in our current ordinances for reciprocity. Right now, it's, you know, and quite frankly, our ordinance is outdated, and it's been commingled with other vehicles for hire, limousines and whatever, and I think there's a better way to set it up, and address kind of the issues that we're having, particularly the reciprocity issue. But, you know, with the way that the community's starting to develop, and the development of things like Uber, which I can see eventually becoming an issue, I think a more comprehensive ordinance would be appropriate.
Yeah, I agree.
And I appreciate, like I said, I just wanted to, with the other, like the other things, I just wanted to bring it to our attention, because when I heard that, I said, I think that's kind of interesting, especially considering, and I understand, one owner resides in Homer, and the other resident, the other owner resides here, so I thought it was kind of strange.
Saving money.
So would it be fair to say that council is directing Cullen and I to look at revising the ordinance to update it, and to include some reciprocity accommodation for someone based in Homer?
Yeah.
I think that it's going to be important that we look at Uber, too.
Yeah, that's a good point.
They're becoming more and more popular.
I would also add to that reciprocity, Marshall, since I would imagine a lot of our taxi cabs would be going to medical facilities, Battle Creek and our, Battle Creek and Jackson, so there are opportunities there.
Okay.
Okay?
And in closing, I do want to remind everyone that we do have the Albion-Marshall shuttle that is available, and it's now available five days a week. I think I had the number handy, but I think it was five-one-seven-six-five-four-three-thousand. So that is an option that is available to all of our residents.
Yep. Great. If we're done with the taxi, we'll go to the city manager's report, which I'm sure is real short.
It's going to be very brief, but I would like to start off with Marie McComb to talk about Show Your Best, and give you an update on that.
Hi.
Hi. I recognize you.
I just wanted to do a little update, just first to remind you that the event is going to take place on Saturday. I'm really happy, because now I have more than fifty, fifty-two businesses and partners and manufacturers or civic organization, even churches, who are coming, so that's pretty unexpected, and I'm really happy about that. I think that you've seen the trailer at the last council meeting, I hope you enjoyed it. And so, no, I'm really happy, everything is, I mean, all the activities are going to take place, and the swimming pool, or the face painting, or the silver sneaker for the seniors, we're going to have like free giveaway all day long. We're going to have, after the marketing trade show that is going to end at three o'clock, we're going to have a kind of snack with hot chocolate cake or coffee provided by Albion College, and after they will have the presentation of the new signage, I mean, welcome sign of the city. And the big prize, which is one hundred dollars in cash for the winner. So, you know, everything is going on, and I just wanted to remind that everything is, I mean, I wanted to thank you, like, the schools, and Albion College, and Chamber of Commerce for this event, their participation and their involvement in this project. Yep.
Yes.
I was informed that you need to order ahead if you want to have lunch there. That's not true, is it?
Oh, you can, you can order before, or you can buy over there?
You can buy it when you're...
Exactly, exactly, you can buy over there.
You don't need a reservation?
No, it's, actually, it was better, it has to have an ID before, that you know that we have to order every plate to the lunch. Right now, that everything is done, you can buy over there, but you can do both, if you want to.
Yes, Marie.
Did you have a chance to see the trailer at the Baum on the Big...
Yeah, I did.
Every, I go there on Thursday, you ought to see this, it is beautiful. I mean, if that was out on the highway, it would be practice, but that was a great job.
Thank you.
You guys really did, it was beautiful.
Yeah, I'm really happy, because it's one of the, I mean, I really tried to reach as many people as possible, and it was one of the best way, and I'm really happy, because, you know, and I really thank Baum Theater, because we have this wonderful opportunity to have this with the trailer, so, you know, it's really often, so that's wonderful.
So I want to applaud Marie and Alexandra, who put together the video promo, and they did an outstanding job. And there's, she hasn't even listed everything that's going on that day, it's just going to be packed field, there's going to be some community awards presented to local residents and volunteers for their outstanding contributions to the community. There's a singer at the end, I believe, who won the...
Exactly, exactly. She was, she was perfor, she was performing during the Festival of the Forks, too, with Lydia. I don't know her more than that, because I'm not experienced in so long a time, but actually, she's really, she's pretty well-known, and she has a beautiful voice, so I'm really happy that she's going to perform over there, and I'm looking forward to seeing that.
It's a free event for everyone who wants to come out, and we encourage everyone to join and see what they're...
Exactly, exactly.
Celebrate about Albion, there's a lot.
Exactly, so there is only like four more days. But talk about it, and come, and, you know, be curious to see what is going on, and I'm really happy. And I do believe that it's a wonderful project for the city, to underlight, to highlight, I mean, all the good assets, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Future agenda items? Yes?
I have one. The mayor has been great with this. I'm asking for a discussion item on the city manager evaluation forms, the copies completed by each individual member of council and the mayor. The reason I want the discussion is because I want to take a look at the other assessments that council and the mayor took towards the manager's situation and their observations. The reason I want it is because I think we work better as a group when we see what each other has written in the past years, we have received those. I can't talk about it, because it is an executive session type thing, but maybe we, I just want to know how, what's the process for us to receive the written copies?
That is an executive session.
Right.
Can you even bring those...
I gave the numbers...
Right.
...that everybody evaluated it out on. Cheryl has a copy of all of the comments.
Yes.
I felt that if Cheryl wanted you to read those, that was Cheryl's option to do so.
Okay, well, I can withdraw the discussion.
You got the numbers, so you could pretty much judge by the numbers. So I guess if Cheryl wants to...
Okay.
...let those out, that's up to you.
I don't have a problem with it, so...
Okay. I withdraw the item.
I mean, that way, it could be on an individual thing, if anybody wants.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, as I recall, mayor, sorry, after we finished the, I think Cheryl did invite each of us to have a conversation with her after, so I think that's...
Exactly. That's cool.
So...
No problem.
I guess that, you know, your call.
All right. I wasn't quite done, though.
Oh, well, Cheryl just informed us she wasn't quite done, so...
She did preface her conversation, she's going to breathe in here now.
A couple of quick things.
My bad.
I want to remind you that the Albion branch in NAACP is having their Freedom Fund Dinner, I believe it's this Saturday. In case you haven't had tickets, I'm sure you can contact Mr. Dunkland if you need any additional information or details. And the Albion Department, well, it's actually the union...
Public Safety Officers Association.
...is having their famous chili cook-off on Friday, starting at five. The competition's going to be stiff, but we encourage everyone to come out and support them, and I will be one of the judges, so I'm looking forward to it, and it should be a fun event. And also, I had a chance to speak with the Antrenue Group, they've been in Albion for one hundred and twenty-eight years, it's amazing, so just to talk with them today and give them an update, and they were very generous and gave a twenty-five dollar contribution to the Albion Joy Club, so I want to thank the members for doing that. And in closing, I don't know if you all received an invitation to the Albion Healthcare Alliance, they're having a celebration on Saturday, November seventh, from seven to ten, at Washington Gardner School. I have the invitation form, if you haven't received it individually.
Jay's been taking care of, Kay's been taking care of citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Property or decorum is required during citizens' comments this evening. Mike Bearman, 11016 29 Mile Road South. Wanted to congratulate you guys for doing a tremendous job with the youth today, recognizing all of the foreign exchange students. I've had six foreign exchange students over the years, and find it very, a big wealth of experience being with them. But what we don't do very well is contact them afterwards and say, hey, come back and start a business here, or come back and do that, because these are the brightest kids that you're going to see from the countries that they're coming from, and they've got a lot of opportunities to come back and do a lot for us. And I've always said that with the exchange students coming into the high school, that we really need to cultivate a little bit of the information back to them, because we never talk to them after they leave here. We never do anything after they leave here, and we really need to start looking at that a little more. And I wanted to say that, you know, everything's going great down Brembo, they've got the steel up in the air, and it's looking fantastic down there, and as a community and as a group, we've got a lot to look forward to around here. Yes?
I just have a question, I don't know if you can answer this. Why were all the trees on the road that the Brembo, you take the road, you take Haven...
Thirty Mile Road South.
Yeah. Why are all the trees being removed?
Consumers Energy's doing that, running a hundred and thirty-eight thousand volt line down to the foundry.
And they couldn't do it without knocking down all those trees? That seems terrible shit.
So, well, take that up with them, but...
Yeah, no, I understand.
Now, there's other things we could do there, but I'll talk to you about that later. So, anything else? Talk to you later. Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, Jay? Watch your step, they're coming through there.
Jay Loomis, 408 West Ash Street. I called Dial-A-Ride, and asked them if they could provide a ride from Peabody to KCC, and their response was no. I realize there's some animosity in the school systems right now about transportation, and that's fine, but I would think they would be able to stop at KCC, and I realize that's probably between the cities. They will stop...
Which KCC, the one out on...
The right, right there on, by Star.
Eastern.
Yeah, Eastern Campus.
The one right outside of town?
Yeah. They will stop within a two-mile radius of Albion, but they won't go to KCC, that is actually more than two miles. But they drive right by it, however you go to Marshall.
Well, I don't know if they were asked before, were they?
No. I'm sorry, but which service are we referring?
Dial-A-Ride.
Oh, and they won't stop?
They won't stop at KCC.
Eastern Academic Center.
Right.
Okay.
To me, it was kind of strange, I was trying to look for, my stepson is enrolled out there, and he was trying to get a ride out there, he does not have a car.
Okay.
And he was picked up in Albion?
I asked, I mean, I asked him if they could pick up at Peabody Place, because that's one of the pickups, and they, but they said they wouldn't do that.
Okay, I'll check.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments? If not, I thank you all very much, and...
Support.
And then we're going to ask for an adjournment that I just got moved and supported on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thank you and good evening.